We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on May 3rd, 2022 to order at 3:01 PM. Our city manager is watching, I believe, online virtually, or not watching, zooming in online. And then we also have our new city secretary, who is not here in person, but is also zooming in online. And we'd like to wish her, Michelle Hicks, a warm welcome. But today we have our assistant city secretary, Mandy Spikes, and our deputy city manager, Deidre Emerson, who is live and in person with us today. So, welcome to Michelle, and we're so glad you'll be a part of our team and look forward to having you in the meeting next time. And with that, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item ordering a hearing and visitors' portion of the agenda on items other than public hearings. Speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Am I registered, Mandy? If not, then we will... Seeing no one registered, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our deputy city manager, Deidre Emerson.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm glad to be serving in this spot today for you all and hope to see Bradley soon. So, there is one, we do have one change to the agenda today, and that would be Resolution 2022-279. It will be removed from consideration today, and no council action is needed in order to remove this item from the agenda.
Very good.
There's one public hearing, and that's Public Hearing 2022-267. And it is our annual public hearing and ordinance for consideration to establish the standards of care for City of Waco youth programs. The resolutions that I'd like to make sure that I highlight for you today are just include three out of the 15 resolutions for consideration. That's Resolution 2022-272. This item on your agenda will be covered in an associated work session, presentation by Galen Price, as well as Milet Hopping of the Waco Housing Authority. This resolution approves financing by Waco Public Facility Corporation to through the issuance and sale of multifamily housing government note Series 2022 in amount not to exceed $19 million. This financing will benefit Steel-Trenwood LP to finance a portion of the cost of acquisition, rehabilitation, and equipping of the Trenwood Apartments, a proposed affordable housing project located at 1700 Dallas Circle. The other one is Resolution 2022-276, and I see Dr. Griggs just walked in. Hey, Dr. Griggs. Resolution 276 recommends a subrecipient agreement with Waco Family Medicine for $2.5 million of the city's American Rescue Plan Act funding. These funds would assist Waco Family Medicine with their proposed facility expansion to over 143,000 square foot facility at an estimated total of $61 million. This allocation of $2.5 million was approved in the city's American Rescue Plan Funding Plan, approved by Resolution 2021-763 at the October 19, 2021 council meeting. And then lastly, I'd like to highlight Resolution 2022-277, which will also be covered in an associated work session today by Jonathan Cook, Director of Parks and Recreation. This resolution awards a contract to Northridge Construction Group for the Challenger Plus Lake Air Little League redevelopment project in an amount to not exceed over $8.8 million and establishing a 2% construction contingency for total authorization amount not to exceed over $8.9 million. This resolution also expresses efficient intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of future bond reimbursement in amount of $2.9 million. I'd also remind you that this project is part of the city-county WISD collaboration in regards to the fields over at Lake Air, as well as what became the base facility. So, this has been a community partnership that has been in process for a number of years. Ordinances on the agenda today, and both of those are second readings. And if there's no questions, that would conclude my report.
The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2022-268 through 282. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, then the consent agenda will include 2022-268 through 282, except for 279, which I believe has been pulled from the consent agenda. The next item on the agenda are work session items 2022-259 through 262. Deidre, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure, thank you, mayor. Work Session 2022-259 is a discussion of Steel-Trenwood LP Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program for the bond issuance. Galen Price will introduce our speakers today.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today you will hear from Steel-Trenwood LP, an affiliate of the Waco Housing Authority, who will be providing you an update on the redevelopment of Trenwood Apartments. As you recall, the City of Waco began working with the Trenwood property in 2019 to resolve numerous code violations, resulting in a lawsuit filed by the city against the current property owners at that time. We worked through challenges, and the property was brought back up to code. In June of 2021, the city was notified of a potential buyer of the property who brought forth a plan for the redevelopment of Trenwood. Council then provided a resolution of support for housing tax credits in September of 2021 regarding this project. And so today you'll be hearing an update from Milet Hopping with the Housing Authority, as well as representatives from Steel Properties LP regarding this Trenwood project.
Awesome, welcome.
Thank you very much for letting us come today. We appreciate it. Let me introduce our partners. This is Deborah Quinlan with Steel Properties, and then Bill Walters with Coats Rose, who is helping us facilitate the process of the partnership. So, we got involved in August of '21, and when Steel Properties was looking for a nonprofit partner to partner with, we gladly accepted. I just want you to know the reasons for that. Even though we cannot provide Section 8 vouchers to a HUD property that's already designated as an affordable housing project, for us with a 2,000 or above waitlist for Section 8 assistance and another 800 people on a public housing waitlist, people still need a place to live. And so we need to find a way to preserve affordable housing around Waco. And so we'll step up to the plate and partner with any developer who will come in and do that. We don't want to lose any more affordable housing, if that's at all possible. So, gladly, we accepted that partnership. We've gone through the processes for that. And so today, we just want to tell you a little bit about what this partnership is going to look like and what it's going to look like for Trenwood, and what we hope will be an improvement, not only for the residents who live there, but for our community. So, if we can start the process, I'll let Deb take over.
All right, great, yes, thank you for having us today. As Milet has said, we're very excited about this partnership. Trenwood Apartments is in definite need of a substantial renovation, and we're excited to step in and provide that. So, Steel Properties is a Denver-based national real estate developer. We have over 75 properties in 24 states, which includes 16 properties in Texas. This will be our first in Waco. We have several in Dallas, and Temple, Texas, and elsewhere in the state. So, Trenwood Apartments was built in the early 1960s. There are 152 units made up of two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments. So, you know, these are fully occupied property, 152 families, many children. And as Milet mentioned, it is a project-based Section 8 family property. So, our plan at Steel would be to acquire and immediately thereafter renovate the property. The renovations are very substantial, totaling over $60,000 per unit. So, that includes new cabinets, new countertops, new flooring, HVAC, LED lighting, accessible units, and accessible amenities for all of the residents. New windows, roofs, and many common amenities as well, including a new community building with a library, arts and crafts room, and a computer lab, as well as a sports court, playground, and picnic pavilion. So, lot of community aspects to this project. And then, of course, also, security upgrades. We will update the security cameras and lighting throughout the property, which will include a monitored security camera company, as well as controlled gate access. And then, on a non-physical aspect, we also intend to add resident services to the property, which will be a third-party resident service coordinator, who will start with a survey to all the residents to figure out what they actually need, and will provide weekly services based on that. All right, so here are some before and after photos of a property that we renovated in Dallas. So, it kind of shows the extent of the renovations that we are planning here. This next slide is the sources and uses of the project. You can see in total, it's over $27 million, over $10 million in improvements to the property. And this will also include a short-term relocation for the residents due to the scope of the rehab and asbestos in the building, given the age of the property. Tenants will be relocated temporarily off-site for a period of up to three weeks, and then returned to their fully renovated units. So, through that period, we have a renovation plan in place that a third-party specialist created, and it will involve making sure that all of the resident needs are taken care of, including coordinating with the schools for, you know, children to make sure they can get to their school when needed. So, our proposed timeline, we've started this process, as Milet said, back in August. So, I've been going through various steps and applications. This month, we're expecting to receive HUD firm commitment for the financing of the project, and also an award of tax credits from TDHCA. Thereafter, we'll continue our financing due diligence and go through the different processes required by HUD, planning a July closing at latest with construction. Starting thereafter, the construction period will be 18 months. It's a big project, and we'll take time to see these changes, but that'll be worth it.
So, later on today, it'll be, I believe, it's Resolution 2...
272.
272, it's number five. And so we'll be hoping that you will vote yes for this. One of the things, I just wanted to explain our role besides what I had said before. We are also the bond issuer, so we'll be issuing the bonds in this deal. And then, of course, we will be the landowner. So, if you have any questions for us, we are open to that now.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. During the construction, are you going to be working on vacant apartments first? Or how are you going to relocate the residents that are there now, if there's any?
Yeah, great question. Yeah, it is a fully occupied property, so the construction will be on sort of a rolling basis through the buildings. Usually, it's done by breezeway. One breezeway will be relocated, and the construction will be done there. And then, people will move back, and then on to the next breezeway.
So, you won't be relocating the residents? You'll just be moving them around from across that breezeway?
They will be relocated to hotels temporarily during that time.
Thank you.
Follow-up question along those lines. My dad's in the Air Force, and so whenever we would move, we have a TLF, you have a temporary living facility. So, I've like spent time living in hotels and know that when there are family with multiple young kids in hotels, stress is really high, and our kids are already under so much stress. So, I'm curious what the accommodations will look like. Will there be multiple rooms for families that are currently in three-bedroom apartments? Will those hotels have cooking facilities? Will there be things like refrigerators, things to minimize just some of the disruption this will cause?
Yes, yes, we always target using extended stay hotels first, which include a kitchenette. And so, for families that are, you know, three bedrooms that can't fit into one room, yes, two would be provided.
Awesome, great.
So, thank you for the presentation. We've been working on this for a very long time, because this is a facility that is in the heart of my district and one that is incredibly important to me. Regarding the construction and rehabilitation, the new windows and, you know, those things, energy... I saw the use of LED, are the windows energy efficient to, you know, try to curtail? Because this, is this for bills, this is bill pay, right?
Those paid, yeah.
But for you even, are they energy efficient to maintain the drastic climate change that we have here in Texas, for one? How many accessible units are there is two. And so that's the physical part, you know? I want you to talk a little bit more about those resident services. And I know you said that you will do an assessment of what the community needs, but perhaps you could give an example of what you do in other units, in other facilities that you all have?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Windows, yes, are energy efficient. There'll be double pane windows, as you mentioned, the LED lighting, and then all of the water fixtures are low-flow fixtures. So, definitely an improvement on the energy efficiency. And I should also mention that HVAC is all being replaced, and that will also be a more efficient unit in each apartment. For the accessibility, 5% of the units will be accessible. So, what is my math? That is eight units, rounds up. And then, 2% are equipped with hearing and visual aids, two separate percent of the units. And then, the resident services are, yeah, a good example, I would say, like financial literacy classes, connecting folks with local resources as well. We've done food pantries, after-school tutoring is definitely an important aspect. And with the new community building, there will actually be space at the property to provide that. And then, there's also a library on site, so I'd imagine reading courses as needed as well.
Okay, thank you. And you said, three weeks is, that's enough time?
Yes, yep.
Because that's pretty, I mean, it seems short to me, but I know that when you're dealing in that kind of turnaround. But if there were, if anything happened in the construction world, because that's that big asterisk if, you all have plans for that, correct?
Yes, 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 especially in today's environment with material delays. And it's something that's on the forefront of our minds constantly. But we won't, we won't move someone out of their unit until we have everything ready to go and ready to complete it in that timeframe. We're not interested in, you know, having people, because it is stressful. It's not fun to live in a hotel, but we are not interested in keeping people off-site longer than necessary.
And what kind of communication plan is there for the residents? I mean, how are they kept in, you know, and communicated with about how the process will work? You know, what's happening, where you are? I mean, is there a plan for that?
Yes, absolutely. When we, when we close, one of the first things we do is hold resident meetings, usually in a couple sessions, just due to the size, and let everyone know the plans, kind of what it's going to look like, who the people that are going to be wandering around the property for the next 18 months are. And then, when it comes time for their scheduled renovations, we'll issue a 30-day notice, and then a week notice. And there's also going to be a specific resident services coordinator. I said resident services, sorry, relocation coordinator, who will also help with that process. And that's kind of their job, to make sure people know what's going on and are ready to go.
Is that one of your staff? Is that someone you hire locally?
Usually, someone we hire locally. It's not someone we have nationally.
Very good, thank you.
I just have a quick comment on the great project, and I appreciate your involvement in this, Steel Properties' involvement in this. And I like the sources and uses statement. It gives me a great idea of where it's coming from and where it's going, and that's very helpful to me. One question I did have on this was the property manager. I'm looking back in the text of the resolution. Is Monroe Group, is that who's the current property manager? How does that, tell me a little bit about Monroe Group.
Monroe Group is actually a sister company to Steel Properties. So, Monroe manages all of the Steel properties.
Got it, a subsidiary of Steel?
Yes.
Got it, thanks.
It will be new management.
That's all I had, mayor.
Any questions or comments? I have a question kind of around the security features. I know you said that you'll have monitored security cameras there. What does that exactly entail?
Yeah, it's actually something we've started doing more recently and has been very effective. There's a third-party company that monitors the cameras on, not a 24/7 on all of the cameras in the property, sort of on a rolling basis at kind of peak hours. And so, if they notice, you know, activity, they will contact the police or the management staff, depending on what's going on. And so, it's been pretty effective, because I think security, you know, onsite security is usually great as well, but patrols can only be in so many places at once, and this can be kind of in multiple areas.
Agreed. In cities where you have come into and flipped, and by the way, I love these before and after photos. I think that's really remarkable and illustrative of exactly the kind of quality that we're looking for in a development like this. Have you seen, when you've come into other communities, have you seen issues where safety has been a concern of the residents, and you have been able to bring positive change as a result of the management companies that you've utilized in your management?
Yes, I would say so. Monroe Group, our property management company, is very focused on security needs across the portfolio and across other properties. So, it is pretty common that we have seen security issues and have been able to help and turn around properties so that it's a safer environment. Monroe Group, we have weekly security meetings, or we have a national security manager, so it's just a pretty regular conversation to make sure that we're providing safe housing.
What are all the tools? I would assume, you know, investment in exterior lighting, you mentioned the security cameras, the gate. What are other tools, amenities, like libraries, arts and crafts rooms, and computer labs? Like, these all, I think, contribute to safer environments. But are there any other, like, tools in your toolkit that comes into play for procuring or ensuring a really safe environment for the residents?
Sure, yeah, I would say building a sense of community, for one, can certainly help, because if residents are proud of where they live and proud of the apartment units, that can also help to encourage a safer property. And then partnerships with the local police department are also very important to make sure we're in communication with one another and...
That's great. I don't need it for purposes of a vote today, but I think what would be interesting to me is if there was any existing data, I mean, you had in your files where you kind of saw crime rates before or crime rates after, or some sort of data that indicated safety measures improving upon your taking over property, I think that'd be really compelling to our community, who I think really desires not only quality affordable housing, but also safe quality affordable housing. I mean, that's one of the components for this development that I'm particularly looking forward to seeing come into being. I think this is a textbook example about how multiple institutions can work together to achieve our local housing goals. And we know really clearly that there's a deep need for affordable quality housing in Waco. So, coming together in this sort of partnership, I think, is something that is really exciting in this moment of great need. So, I really, you know, peeling back even to beginning, this story began, I believe, when our code enforcement office and our legal team, Jennifer, and our city management team began really looking in depth at code violations at Trenwood that I believe let, hopefully, played a part in leading us to this moment where we're here today, where a new group is looking and coming in and injecting capital through an impressive capital stack that I think also shows the kind of funding that is available for affordable housing in our country. And finding developers who are going to be strategically able to take advantage of that is critical for us to be able to achieve our goals. So, welcome to Waco. I think that this is going to meet a critical need. The need for safe and quality housing stock is a huge priority of this council. And I know that we're going to continue to explore the multiple ways to achieve that goal. There's multiple partners, there's multiple ways that we can go about working to bring increased units to this community, but this is certainly an exciting one for us to get to play a small role in achieving that. And look forward to being great allies and partners with you as you bring this, these capital investments and kind of a new day at the Trenwood Apartments as you come to Waco. So, welcome to our community.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you. And I believe next we have work session 2022-260.
Yes, mayor. Jonathan Cook, Director of Parks and Recreation, along with Kurt Caffey, President of Pro Parks Management, are here today to present on the update on the 2021 Hawaiian Falls Annual Report and discuss plans for the 2022 season. Jonathan, I'll let you introduce Mr. Caffey.
Hello, sirs. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm Jonathan Cook, Director of Parks and Recreation Department. And as Deputy City Manager Emerson mentioned, this is Kurt Caffey with our Pro Parks Management Group that oversee the operations at Hawaiian Falls, Waco. Just a little introduction, before Kurt speaks to some happenings last year and what's going on at the water park this year, I wanted to give some background information on Hawaiian Falls, Waco, and really how we got to this point. Back in 2000, 2001, city council and our leaders really had a grand vision to create a recreational hub out off of Steinbeck Bend and Lake Shore Drive that really played off the natural aesthetic of our river corridor out there. And I tell you what, 20 years later, here we are still talking about it, and these areas still are a crown jewel of our park system. We have the River Bend Park Baseball and Softball Complex, also the Waco Regional Tennis Center, which is operated with the Allen Samuels Group. And as I mentioned, the Waco Water Park was constructed. At that time, a Waco Water Park was a city facility and city managed, but did not include all the slides you see in that picture. It started with the family pool, a lap pool, some, a couple other features. But in 2011, that's when we established an agreement with Waco Family Entertainment. And this management group came in with multiple sites across the state and created Hawaiian Falls, Waco. And the project included some slide expansions, also the wave pool, the lazy river. Came in, added a kid splash pad area and a beach zone as well, and got us all the way to the point into 2018. And that's when Pro Parks Management and Store Master Funding stepped in. And since that time, Kurt and his leadership has really created an air of sensibility, but also infused into the site of a lot of improvements that we're going to talk about today, and got us to this point where we're looking towards the future. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kurt, and he's going to give a report of the 2021 season.
Yeah, thanks, Jonathan, and it's a pleasure to be here with you all. Thank you so much for the time today, and good to see you again. Just a real quick summary here, and this is high-level information, but you'll notice that 2019 was the best year we had had since 2018. So, we'd seen a year... So, we'd seen a year-over-year improvement in 2019, then of course, 2020, being heavily impacted by COVID restrictions and just the overall pandemic. And then 2021 was quite a rebound year, not quite the same attendance we'd seen in 2019, but certainly a better revenue year. And a large portion of the reason that happened was we sold a lot more season passes. So we converted a lot of day visit guests to be annual pass holders and come, you know, on multiple visits. So that's a real story that we're proud of and we're excited to see continue as we head into 2022. There was a heavy push from our side on the marketing dollars to go into some of the outer markets. So about 75% of those passes were sold in what I would call the 10 to 15-mile radius around Waco. The other 25% were sold in Round Rock, Taylor Hutto, Corsicana, Colleen, even Bryan College Station. So we're very pleased that we were able to bring some other folks to the city to recreate. And so it's been really helpful. One thing that we did not see really return in 2021, which gives us great encouragement as we think about 2022, was group business. The schools, the, it stopped coming as, you know, congregating on a bus and coming. And in 2021, that really wasn't back. But we're starting to see those bookings come back as we look to 2022. So very positive. A real quick overview of some of the things we've invested in since we've been in the parks. So in 2019, we took what was the center island of the lazy river, which at the time was just kind of mud and grass, and we added sand and mini golf to that and rebranded it as Hula Island. We spent about $200,000 on that, which was a nice addition. It really kind of gave us some additional space for people to recreate in the park and some new attractions. In 2020, we added the Kona Bay Family Play Unit, which is a 10-slide structure with multiple tipping buckets, lots of water features. And it's something that all age groups can do together, mom, dad, kids, grandparents. It's a multi-generational attraction. We also added a new food outlet to try and keep up with the demand for that as well. Of course, coming into 2020, we were all excited about that. And then the pandemic hit and we really didn't get to enjoy any upside from a financial perspective or really even from an attendance perspective. So that really kind of, we think, came forward in 2021 when people were finally able to think about recreating again. They knew we had some new experiences and we saw that happen in 2021. We came back and also took the island up another level by adding some, and a lot of this isn't really sexy, fun to talk about, but new drainage and things that really helped kind of keep that area looking nicer. And then new white sand and a new retaining wall to keep that sand from ending up in the lazy river. And a bunch of those kinds of things really make a big, big improvement.
You mean drainage isn't sexy?
I'll leave that one. In 2022 this year, we're adding more cabanas, we're doing restroom renovations, which was desperately needed. We're expanding our surf shop. We've partnered with HTO to be able to offer the flavored teas. And potentially, we'll add a bar at some point to the park as well. We've spent about $200,000 also painting some more slides over the next two weeks. So just really trying to keep the place looking great and having great, a great experience for families. You know, I think what's really important, and some of you guys, I think, at least, I think Mr. Holmes was here when we first came, we, you know, one of the questions that was asked is where do we see the park over the next, you know, few years? And so we're very excited to say that, I mean, obviously, the city has created an amazing destination and we're glad to be part of that. But we really do believe Austin, San Antonio, Dallas, Houston, this will be a great place for them to continue to recreate. And it gives us more aspirations of new rides, new offerings, and, you know, more things for people to do when they come to the city. Real quick summary about what's coming up for our season. We are so excited, it's water park season. And I know today felt a little bit cold, but I'm being told that Saturday will be in the upper 90s. So we're really excited about that. And so we're just ready to get going again. We've hired more people at this point in the season than we've ever done, which is really hard to do when there's a hiring shortage, it seems. But we're really glad that we've seen a lot of people coming out to want to work at the water park this summer. So that's really exciting. We're targeting very similar results to 2021. If we can do that every year, we're going to be happy from a financial perspective. Now it's time to start really building in some of the better amenities for the guests, which is why we're putting in the nicer cabanas and some of the other, like bathroom upgrades and things that we thought were important. There is a request for us to be able to sell alcohol at some point. We operate three of the five Hawaiian Falls water parks. This is the only one that doesn't have the ability to sell alcoholic beverages. And I would just, for reference, let you know that, you know, Slitterbon, Epic in Grand Prairie, which is operated by the city of Grand Prairie, and Splashway, I could probably name off 25 water parks that all sell alcohol. And we all do it in the same way. We don't sell a lot of it, we sell a two-drink maximum. We also don't mix drinks. We don't pour you a tequila shooter or whatever you might want. I'm not, I don't drink much, so I can't really speak to all those things. But we sell a pina colada or margarita or beer. And that's pretty much our full inventory. And so we listen to our customers, and our customers always come to us with ideas and things that they want. And this is one of the most common things, where can I, where can I have a beer with my cheeseburger and fries? And it's not an offering that we have at this park. Obviously, it takes time to get a license, so I'm not even sure if you said today, hey, go for it, Hawaiian Falls. I'm not sure by the time we go through TABC process if it's even a 2022 thing that can actually happen. But we would love for you to consider it. And the city of Roanoke was our first test market, and it went extremely well. We don't sell it in a giant cup. It's non-discreet, it's very discreet. We don't have any signs in the park except at the location where it's sold. We don't do it on our social media. It's not even on the websites. It's simply an amenity if somebody wants it. It's not a big part of our revenues. It's more of a piece of, you know, meeting the needs of the guests and what they've asked for.
Well, thank you, Kurt. And, you know, as I said, Pro Parks has come in with the investment and the intent to continue to grow and really continue with the economic impact and the vision that we have with River Bend Park, with the baseball complex and the tennis center as well. And it's a nice compliment. We do want to seek some input today in direction in regards to the alcohol sales. In the current contract, there is a clause that does not allow the sale of alcohol. So what we would be doing is taking your input and direction, and then we would come back with a future amendment to the contract that would potentially allow that.
Questions, comments?
As the resident Baptist deacon, from a teetotalling tradition, I'll weigh in first, which is to say, it, to me, I think that request under those parameters seems pretty reasonable. That doesn't sound to me like a spring break experience or any, any experience where you would see binge drinking or people getting out of control. I think Wacoans are familiar with family-friendly venues where alcohol is sold responsibly, and that's what this seems to be to me. I think having a two-drink maximum and not having mixed drinks is prudent as well, as is, you know, having sensible containers for it. So I'm on board.
Holmes over here, I want to make sure it's a two-drink maximum, not a two-drink minimum, right? So we.
Agreed.
We have other city venues that, and I'm asking City Attorney Richie, we have other city venues that allow alcohol sales.
We do.
We do. So this isn't, we're not breaking new ground here. This is, I think this makes sense in this venue in particular. And we're covered with liability issues and indemnity and that sort of thing through contractual.
We will be.
Okay. The other feedback I've had on this is the cups being used. One citizen said, we need to make sure that alcohol is in a blue, whatever, or I guess red, maybe. The red solo cup and the colas or the pop is in a different colored cup. There was more concern about making sure that minors weren't drinking, I guess.
Of course, and that's obviously a huge concern for us as well. So 100%. We check everybody's ice chests when they come in, as we do allow folks to bring in sandwiches and, you know, other, other things. And occasionally, we'll find alcoholic beverages, we send back to their vehicle, and they can have it later. But this is also just another way to prevent that additional desire that someone might want to bring something in.
Yeah, the thinking point you're not, Kurt, in the presentation, that the glass bottles also, that people introducing them into the environment is not good, particularly with the water around and kids running around without shoes on and whatnot.
Unfortunately, glass on the bottom of a pool is almost something you can't see. And so if it breaks in a pool, we have to drain the pool, clean it. And when you have a wave pool or a lazy river with several hundred thousand gallons, that's a, that's a real challenge. We do our best to prevent that from happening.
I appreciate all the improvements you've put in there and the ones you have planned for this coming year, too. I think it's becoming a neat attraction for the city. I'm also impressed with your numbers there, the attendance over the three-year, year-over-year look actually was about the same from two years ago, but your profit, your revenues went up like 50%.
The big number change there is the season pass number. We went from about 7,000 units in 2019 to 12,000.
Just a great strategy there. And I wish our zoo could have those same numbers, and I hate to bring the zoo into this deal, but this is another, another amenity that we have here in the city that we are trying to improve the revenue numbers. But I like, I like the creativity of that management.
But this doesn't, you don't currently have a BYOB policy, and this would not create one.
Absolutely not. We 100% do not allow alcoholic consumption. If, if we were to allow it, it would be something that we could control, and that's the heart behind this.
Thank you for the presentation. It was, I think, Mayor and I went out last summer, and there are no pics of the mayor on the slide. But I appreciate the upgrades to the cabanas and those kinds of things. I have older children, and so it's a different experience than what, you know, Mayor was experiencing. But, so it allowed a bit of, even though my children were there, it was an opportunity for adults to kind of separate and do what they do in that kind of facility. So I was really pleased to see those upgrades. I too am very pleased with the numbers and the way that, that the marketing strategies that have changed and presented opportunities. I think that our rural communities, as well as our, our core community and our citizens of Waco, have an amazing opportunity in this park to not have to travel and experience. I think that, that long-term, you know, there are things that can continue to make this, that type of attraction and that type of another jewel that is nestled in Cameron Park to just highlight and showcase what we have, who we are and what we have. I think that, that Councilmember Holmes brought up a valid point about making sure, and I think that that's something that would be incredibly important to us, to make sure that children who are crafty don't have the opportunity to switch cups. You know, so I'm assuming that those would be, you know, specifically branded and/or something.
That's right. We have a specifically branded cup, and absolutely, we're.
But that's not sold for like soda?
Not at all. No, it's very, it's very different. All of our soda's Pepsi, so it's got a big Pepsi logo on it, so.
Okay. Very good. Very good. So the newer, the newer cabana parts are completed, right?
We just completed another 13 for this summer.
Okay, okay, cool. Very good. And so, but you don't know when the upgrade would happen, but that's already just in place. It's when TABC says yes or no. Upon approval this evening, which, I mean, I have, I'm in support, because a two-drink maximum of a frozen something and/or beer, I don't know that's going to change the world. And especially since it's something that we already do at our other city-owned facilities. I think that's the piece that everyone should, should feel at ease with, because if you're golfing or you're playing tennis, you know, it's, it's there and available to you. But just the, with the assurance of protection of under, you know, of the, to not encourage underage drinking and those kinds of things, I think that this is, is a great addition to an already thriving organization that I'm, I'm proud to have in my district.
Thank you. And families are always going to be number one for us. We just want to make acknowledgement that mom and dad are part of the family in this situation.
Yeah. Thank you for that. We appreciate that.
I have mixed emotions about this, but thank you for this presentation. I think it's something really great that Waco has, something that the families can go and enjoy in the summertime. And across the street, we have the River Bend Ballparks, which I frequent quite regularly. Do we sell beer there? I don't think, do we? At River Bend?
Yes, it is sold during our league play on weeknights.
Oh, okay.
And so, and that is handled through our concessionaire at the water.
Because I don't remember seeing anybody during the day when we have tournaments out there.
Yeah, if it is a youth, all-youth tournament or only youth playing, you will not see the alcohol sales. But when there are adult games going on or an adult softball tournament, that's when Double R will sell alcohol.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm supportive if the rest of the council lists. I like the two-drink, not minimum, but. But I think it'll just make more family members go and enjoy the day with their kids if they can indulge a little bit in, in a drink with their food. I'm supportive of the alcohol sales for two, only two drinks. And is there a way that we can monitor what happens after we, if and when we sell past the alcohol sales? Can we monitor what happens or if anything happens or if we have more aggressive actions by certain people or folks or whatever? Is there a way that we can monitor that for about a year or six months to make us feel maybe a little better about passing this?
Well, I thought that there might be some sort of thing in our contract amendment that could be brought back to council where if, after alcohol sales are implemented, we see some sort of increase in violent or criminal activity or some issues. If there's a, some sort of provision that, where we can show that alcohol sales are creating an atmosphere that is not conducive to a family-friendly atmosphere, then we would have an ability to pull, pull back that amendment that we enter into regarding alcohol sales. So I, maybe that would address your concern.
I would be comfortable with something like that, Mayor. Probationary. I'm done, I think.
Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, I went to Hawaiian Falls a few years back, and then I went there last year, and it was pristine. And not only was there significant dollars in capital investment, but also what appeared to be a lot of dollars towards taking care of and stewarding the assets that existed in the park and ensuring that it was well taken care of. I mean, I think having a clean and safe environment is going to be something that's important for residents and guests of Waco who are attending the park. So I want to commend you for that. I, I'm, you know, my goal is for this to be a fun, family-friendly atmosphere and think that with the restrictions that you have proposed, we can ensure that that continues to be the case. And as I mentioned, I think looking at some vehicle with which, if for some reason alcohol sales changed that atmosphere, we had an opportunity to revisit this amendment or pull back that restriction would be something that I would be interested in seeing. But I, you know, have nothing but belief that with the track record you guys have and your primary goal being to increase attendance and procure a family-friendly atmosphere, that, that you're going to put the, the restrictions in place to ensure that that continues to be the case. And so I, you know, again, I think this is an opportunity to really serve our residents as well as our guests. This is a step forward. This, the work that we're doing in partnership with you, not just the alcohol sales, but the general partnership itself is a testament of where this council and our city is trying to work to build up our city. And again, just kind of like the last presentation, another great example of how with a strategic partnership, we really can create a better city for all of our residents. One of the questions I had, and this might be for staff, is that I think at one point there was a library pass opportunity where season passes were available for checkout at our libraries. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah. There is an attraction pass, and whether it's the Waco Mammoth National Monument or the library, I believe the zoo takes part in that as well, to where you can check those out. Hawaiian Falls is currently not part of that as they're their own private entity and managing out there. But I will say, we've been able to do, just a couple weeks ago, we were able to do some collaboration as we did our community center open houses and did some promotion. There's multiple promotional days to where there's discounted rates that Kurt and his staff does. And so I know we've talked about some opportunity for additional exposure with city attractions. That's something in the marketing plan we'll continue to work with Kurt with.
I just appreciate really thinking. I, I just appreciate really thinking strategically on how we can create an atmosphere that is utilizing those kind of strategies, discounted days, to really allow for all members of our community to have access to this.
Mayor, is that something that maybe if, let's say someone, you know, did some community service, volunteer hours, and did a, a program like that, that then perhaps that would garner a season pass?
I'm, I'm open to any and all creative ideas on how staff can work with Kurt and his team to create pathways of accessibility to our community. So whether that, you know, library pass or strategic day where you blitz a neighborhood or community center with discount opportunities, utilizing that type of strategies is what I'm interested in our, our team working with Kurt and his team to deploy.
Mayor and council, I just want to remind you all that this will be coming back to you all as an amendment for you all to vote on. And so, and not to, y'all, we're really grateful for all the direction you all given us, but we will, y'all will certainly get another chance to look at the proposed amendments to see if they meet y'all's concerns.
That's great.
You know, during the baseball season tournaments, when a, and I don't think I've seen it in Riverbend, I may be mistaken, marketing, advertising about Hawaiian Falls, because when a team gets knocked out of a tournament, they're tired. I've always told them, go to Riverbend, and this, I mean, to Hawaiian Falls. And where is that? Right across the street. So I was just wondering if maybe sometimes during tournament play, if we can put up a sign that says Hawaiian Falls is right across the street, guys, you can come over.
I'll be happy to pay for and build the sign. I'll build a giant monument on the highway if you'd like as well. Happy to do that, too.
Our teams are knocked out of a tournament, you know, we want to, some fun folks want to go straight home, but then some of them want to go and relax, you know, in some water activities. But I was, that's just a thought, just a thought.
Great input, and marketing-wise, we'll be taking into consideration as we continue to work with them.
Great. Kurt, thanks so much for being here. We appreciate you.
Thank you all for having me. Appreciate it. Look forward to a great summer.
That's great. And I think the next item, Jonathan is gonna stick around here with us.
I'm just doing double duty today, so he and Tom Balk will present our next work session. Then we'll give an update on the Challenger, a little Lake Air, and a little development project. Jonathan?
Thank you once again, and yeah, not often you get to go back-to-back, but glad to be here. And I am joined by Tom Balk, our program manager of park development and assets for the city of Waco, parks in our creation department, and just really a guiding force in a lot of our park projects that we have going on right now. And so, happy to thank you for joining us. And as Deputy City Manager Emerson said, we're gonna be looking at our Challenger and Lake Air relocation project, but then also taking a broader picture of our city-owned ballfields that we have here in the city of Waco. A little bit of an overview of what we're gonna be chatting about here today. We're gonna be looking at that impact of youth sports and how that's one of our core missions for our parks in our creation department. And then taking a dive into what exactly is the proposed relocation of the fields look like and that design, and inventory our ballfields, the availability and participation numbers, and then also some examples of our current inventory that we have. And we'll be wrapping up by looking at some improvements that we've recently made, but also some challenges that we see in the future, and looking for some discussion and direction from y'all as we continue to move forward and the next steps that we need to take in regards to the Challenger and Lake Air area. Now, to borrow from Mayor Meek here and a slogan he's about to trademark for us, but the city of champions, and I just always loved this picture. I couldn't help but play. This is a 2017 champions, Little League softball champions from the Lake Air organization. And just the smiles on the faces sort of say it all right there in the picture. And how do you create champions? You know, obviously, it's hard work, it's dedication. But one of the key components I really feel like is the opportunity, and giving our kids and all of our community the opportunity to succeed. And that's not just about a title or a trophy. You know, looking at what the National Park Recreation says, and we take a lot of guidance from their documents, that when children have the opportunity to play sports, they increase their chances of a healthy lifestyle. They build confidence, feel good about themselves. But you know, those teamwork and respect, those are all key developmental skills that give kids a chance to succeed not only in school and future career. And to me, that's what a champion means. And for our department, we have our own programs that we run in-house with our athletic staff. The Team Waco Track Program, a great collaboration with Baylor Track Athletes, that we send to state meets each year. We also have a youth basketball program with upwards of fifty and seventy teams each winter. And then even more recently, we've seen an explosion of footsaw, which is like soccer played on small courts and soccer leagues at our community centers. But you know, we, we can do it all. And so, we do have to depend on other organizations to help put on youth programs. And a reminder, Waco is actually home to the Little League Southwest Region headquarters, with facilities out off of South University Parks, to where the state championships were years. I remember when I was a kid, the aspiration, I was playing Little League, we wanted to go to Waco. And I remember my coach took us on a trip. When I was nine years old, before I got to the ten, eleven-year-old division, we came to Waco. And that was the first time I ever experienced Waco. I'll never forget that. And you know, still, and that was a long time ago now, but you know, we're still the home of the state championship headquarters. And I tell you, that speaks to the level of how baseball and softball are important for our community. And to have these different leagues and different facilities, we do depend on our, our community organizations to provide those opportunities. And with Lake Air and the Challenger Fields as part of a project that Tom's gonna be speaking about, there's a need for this relocation. But that need presents the opportunity, and I'm gonna let Tom look back at how we got to this point.
Absolutely. And thank you, Jonathan. And thank you, Mayor and Council. We are absolutely so fortunate to have these excellent leagues and programming in Waco. And tonight, obviously, we're talking about two in particular as part of the Challenger and Lake Air Little League relocation project. These organizations have been in our community, serving our community for over seventy years and over thirty years respectively. And as council may recall, last February, an inter-local agreement was finalized with McLennan County and Waco ISD detailing strategic coordination for community benefit in this area. And it included the funding plan and land transfers necessary as part of the venue project that had been underway since 2015. So the agreement, the agreement included transfer of the Little League site to Waco ISD in August of this year, following the current season of play. The Challenger and Lake Air Little League relocation project is now ready for construction award to facilitate transition to a new site. Next slide. And so, just to recap, we've got two slides here that just give that visual reference to what that shifting entailed as part of the project, the venue project. And so, in this first slide, notably at the top, we have four baseball fields along New Road in that Lake Air Little League section. And in the next slide, it'll show consolidation into property that we already owned in the vicinity, but reconfiguration that allows modernization of these facilities in a layout that's much more efficient, bringing all the programming onto a single site, and relocating the Drive for Cobb's recycling center. I think we can go to the next one. And what we have really in content, we've got the same number of fields, the same, same number of baseball fields, same number of softball fields. We've got Challenger on site. And what we have in addition to that is one field that can accommodate Challengers' growing, older programming. So they've got huge participation numbers, they've got a need for an additional field. And so, we were able to squeeze all of that into a pretty tight site. And so, we've got those fields, we've got concessions building, restrooms, bleachers and storage, as well as the entrance to Cobb's off the right. And so, that's revised. It formerly was off of Forty-Fourth Street, it'll now be off of Trice. Next slide. And it bears the, the funding update with bids. Bids opened on February fifteenth, and this bid structure of that process was based on design estimates that took into consideration that costs were escalating. And so, a series of ad alternates were proposed as a safeguards, as a safeguard against this escalation. However, actual bids significantly exceeded available funding. So there was a lengthy process involved with the engineering team and staff and management to talk about what the bid results meant, what our options were, and what funding strategies might be available. Staff recommendations centers around, we need to award to lock-in pricing at this point for components that are going to continue to escalate. For example, the lighting, the lighting systems, those have grown and will continue to grow in, in this climate. And also, with the time sensitivity of the project, it is important to award the base bid to get that process started. And so, what this strategy that we're proposing centers around is awarding those initial components and continuing to work with the engineer and the contractor to value engineer. One of the categories in particular that we saw significant escalation, which was with the structures. And so, we're gonna take a closer look with the restrooms and concessions buildings to see if there are savings that can still be found. And then there's certainly specific language included here about the additional funding. How are we going to overcome the, the 2.9 million shortfall? The funding will come from the Special Projects Reserve Fund. However, a resolution to approve the contract will include language to reimburse the funds from a future bond sale. We, of course, are committed to trying to find those savings yet while the, while, before the bond is issued, so we may be able to reduce that number. But the, the main impetus is to get the construction started, so that we can be ready for the 2023 season.
Right. And as Tom mentioned and to highlight, we did have an agreement there where Little League is taking place on the baseball fields. And as of August, that will be transferred over to Waco ISD. So it's very important, and we'll be working hard to look for as we look towards next season, this project and getting it underway. And I want to highlight, and just looking at that, this is one area, but as I mentioned, we'll come back to this certain project, but also wanted to take a step back and really provide an overview of not only the Lake Air and Challenger area, but an overview of our ballfields that we have throughout the city. You see, we've got baseball spread out across in multiple districts. And as Waco grows, obviously, we, we want to continue making sure that there is availability of not only baseball areas, but parks throughout our city. We currently do have forty areas that are city-owned for baseball and softball. Now, these are not forty fields. I will say, these are eleven backstops at different neighborhood parks throughout our city. We also have a classification of practice fields, where teams can go out and practice. Fourteen league and game fields. This includes some complex fields, but areas, fields that are a higher level of maintenance with the dirt in fields, we have fourteen of those. And then we have our eight tournament fields, and really at the city-operated Riverbend Park, which we'll take a little bit of a look at. Now, that's just at the city-owned. I want to add that if you start adding up, the number starts to rise even more around the greater Waco area, as you have fields on private property. You also have community-owned land, whether that be school district property or community little leagues. Churches often have a practice field, so there are a variety of areas, especially this time of year, when you drive past open green space, you'll often see these teams practicing out there. So there, there are a large amount of areas for kids, but you know, it's a sport. At this time of year, everybody's wanting to practice at the same time, so it's a lot of juggling. But that gives you a view of where all we have facilities throughout the city. Now, availability, that's first and foremost of how do people are able to access these. Our backstop areas at our neighborhood parks, any team can go out and practice at any time. Those are available on a first-come, first-served basis. We do rent out our game fields and practice field areas. Teams can call our office and rent those. They can also rent out areas and fields at Riverbend Park and can play at night as well with the rental fee on that. Another process to guarantee availability is we have our use agreements. And our use agreements are issued annually. And a lot of long-term agreements, we look at those each year. But Eastern Little League, Lake Air Little League and Challenger League are all organizations that we do have an agreement with that goes through our legal office each year to use certain areas. Along with the Little Leagues, we also have a handful of select organizations that utilize city property. And those include the Waco Heat and Buzz Lightning and Waco Rampage organizations. All of these, Waco Heat provides softball, Rampage provides a mix of both. So these are organizations, we've worked with others in, in the past, but currently, these are the organizations that we have current agreements with. Now, with our use agreements-
Jonathan?
Yes?
Should I make a distinction between Waco Heat, Buzz Lightning and Waco Rampage?
Yes.
Waco Rampage does not charge their kids to come and play. Waco Heat and Buzz Lightning do, but Waco Rampage does not charge the kids to come and play. I just wanted the council to know that.
Correct. And, and thank you for, for that input. There are, with our use agreements, there is not a charge for the field usage and rental fees. However, I will say, there are certain maintenance responsibilities that are covered by the organizations. And we'll look at that. We have a maintenance matrix to where the city provides certain services, mowing and general field prep. But then these organizations, they set and go above and beyond in making sure that these are in quality condition. And additional requirements for our agreements, these organizations do have to provide bylaws for the organization. They have to have a board. They also have to submit things such as background checks as well.
Jonathan? For the maintenance matrix, are they the same for all of the organizations, or are they based on, are they, are they, are they differently arranged?
No, the matrix is the same in all use agreements. I, I will mention, as we look at those, some organizations, you know, they, they will go above and beyond and do certain things or work with us. But the matrix is the same with all use agreements.
What does that mean?
If they want to go out and they want to mow their field every day, you know, above and beyond what the city's gonna come out and mow, or they want to make certain improvements, you know, add extra dirt, or maybe fix a mound up, those types of things based on the matrix or-
Do they have to, I mean, is that something that's managed with you all? Because, I mean, there are certain standards that have to be said. I mean, like sprinkler heads and all that kind of business.
Correct. And you know, and irrigation is something that the city is supposed to take care of on that, and that's across the board in this time of year, a constant process. But yeah, that is something that's coordinated with us, with organizations. And, you know, and like I said, with, with Lake Air, I know they've got a maintenance guys out there, and they will do that field prep day in and day out. And a lot of it is with organizations, volunteer-based, on, you know, parents out there working and, you know, working on the fields. So that's the availability of our fields. And before I take a dive into the organizations, I, I do want to talk a little bit about Riverbend Park. As we talked about in Hawaiian Falls and across the street, we have a Riverbend Park ballpark complex. And these are eight tournament fields in a double penfield, penwheel design along the river. These fields, we do have our athletic staff manages leagues and different tournaments out there, and then we have a maintenance crew to tend to these fields. To show the need for practice areas, in the past year, looking at this season and last, we had 550 practice rentals that came into the system. We saw a big boost once, you know, COVID died down a little bit. Last year, we, we had a great response back in our adult softball leagues. Our summer leagues had some of their highest registrations last year. Spring leagues are strong again. So definitely a demand for recreation out there. We also host tournaments on the weekends, softball, youth baseball. These are economic impact tournaments, obviously, central location. We will bring in anywhere from thirty up to sixty teams on the weekend, staying in hotels, and playing all the way till eight AM to midnight. So, you know, Riverbend Park, it's a seven-day-a-week operation. We also, currently, we are hosting Lake Air softball and Challenger games on some of these fields as we're moving into the project phases. And then we also use these fields as a flex space for adult soccer, which has proven to be quite popular over the past couple of years, and we use the outfield. In looking at participation numbers in regards to our Little Leagues and our select organizations, I, I did a jump here, you know. I have to mention, like everything, and just as with Kurt with Hawaiian Falls, 2020 and 21 were tough years. Especially at the start of 21, there were still a lot of concerns. I myself didn't sign my kids up to play on, on some teams. So numbers were down in those two years. 2020, most leagues did not even play, just based on the timing, because remember, COVID hit right in March when people were signing up. So 2019 compared to 2022 gives a good estimate of the amount of participation that we have. You know, our Challenger League, we, we did mention, they have grown, their, their numbers dipped down a little this year, although I was out at the opening day ceremonies, and over 700 people were out there. And that's just a great organization, youth and adults providing opportunities for those with disabilities. And that's just a great organization, youth and adults providing opportunities for those with disabilities. And also a great volunteer program and they do a wonderful job. Eastern Little League, they have continued, they're about that 140, 150, so about the same there. Lake Air Little League did see a little bit of a drop. I know last year, one thing, Southern Little League did not play with COVID. I'll mention and talk about Southern Little League actually sits on Waco ISD property, but last year, Southern and Lake Air played together. Now with our select organizations, you know, those are teams that, that travel, often go to tournaments. And there is definitely a national rise. This is really competitive baseball. But their numbers, it is a pay to play except for Waco Rampage to where they provide that opportunity, which is a great asset to have in our community. But their numbers are really the same. I will note, Waco Rampage, you see the to be determined. They're not playing this spring, but they are working together and they're going to be starting very soon.
Can we say why?
Yeah, I'm not sure why.
The, the construction on Dutton, they were not able to get to their fields. So they were not able to play. I just want everybody to know that because construction on Dutton Avenue and on between 11th and I think 15th Street, they were not ever able to get into their fields. So that construction has been ongoing for over a year. And so that's why they, they have their numbers down because they were not able to get onto their fields and practice. And they're still, I think, I think there's a pathway, somebody opened up a pathway to get to their fields. And they're just now beginning to start trying to get over there, but it's, it's dangerous. It's dangerous for the kids and for the cars of the parents to get over there. I know because I go over there a lot.
Yep. Access is.
So I just wanted the council to know that's why their numbers are down because they were, they didn't play. Because they couldn't get to the fields because of the construction on Dutton. I think they're doing, they got great big old. I mean, they just tore up the whole area. I think if Riley was here, he'd agree with me because he went down there.
It, it has. Well, and then looking, so obviously those 2022 numbers, we do expect an increase in that area. But in general, you're looking just in these organizations that are on city property around that 1,200 range. A unique thing that we've seen last year with COVID with some numbers, but it's also continued this year is interleague among these Waco, interleague play among the Waco area little leagues. Now, little leagues traditionally have neighborhoods, you know, and boundaries, which are requirements to have an organization. But what we see right now is because of the numbers, we have these teams throughout Waco playing in different fields. Like right now, we've got softball, all different teams from different areas, whether it's Robinson or Lacy Lakeview are playing out at Riverbend. And then they'll go to Eastern, they're playing at different locations. So the rise of interleague play in cities to where neighborhoods aren't just playing other neighborhood teams, that's something that we're seeing. And when you look at not only at Riverbend Park, but potential of an eight field complex out at Lake Air, it provides that opportunity to where you have a centralized location for play. I mentioned the rise of select baseball as maybe you've seen Little League go down, but it doesn't mean baseball's not being played. There's just a great amount of select teams. And the last thing I want to note on participation is spring versus fall. You know, traditionally you will see spring as baseball time and no doubt that's when the heavy games in a lot of leagues take place. But the select teams will play throughout the year. There's also a lot of organizations that look to have fall ball as well. And really one of our goals when we're looking at utilization of areas is basically that year round activation. And looking, we, we don't want areas in baseball fields or any type of sports fields sitting vacant. We like to be able to flex them. And that's something that we've tried to do with the soccer concept at Riverbend as well.
So is that for all fields or just Riverbend activating in the fall?
No, we, we really want, anytime we have baseball areas, we want to try to act, you know, if it's not using for baseball, it's just a strategic intent. It may be something we're not doing right now, but as we look to the future, it's just a goal to try to activate park space as much as possible.
And so with that, I guess, because I know you all ready, like ready the fields for baseball season or whatever. I guess that whatever that transition would also occur in the fall.
Sure. Yeah. If an organization, you know, is going to be having a fall league and play ball, we would come out and do some field prep as well. So looking at participation, I did want to provide a snapshot of some of these fields where our use agreements take place. And as we've talked about with the project, we have our Lake Air Little League complex. Now both youth, baseball and softball are played at this complex. There's also some fields that are used by select teams for practices. But six fields for baseball and softball, there is currently that one field for challenger, which is on your right. But this complex does feature lights and restrooms and concession area. And as I mentioned, the Lake Air softball games are currently taking place at Riverbend Park as we get this project up and going. The challenger league, as we mentioned, both youth and adult participants. And so that's interesting is it covers all ages and definitely provides opportunity for community involvement. Currently it is just one field. They do share because of their numbers, a field with Lake Air softball. And as we mentioned, the design, the proposal does have two challenger, two fields dedicated for challenger. And they are already also looking, as we're looking at this project proceeding, they're playing Riverbend this season. On the left here, you have an overview of our Eastern Little League complex. An area that can be used, you have a large field, a smaller field, youth baseball and capable to host youth baseball and softball. You do have one practice infield, which was skinned last year. Our crews went out there to provide some T-ball, perhaps areas, but it is not a formal field location, but that one's on the right hand side. You have lights and restrooms and some parking area as well. We did go in with some improvements to that parking area, which you see on the top left this past off season. An interesting thing to note about this property, it is split between the city of Waco and Waco ISD property with each entity having about four acres of this site.
Is there any intention to make that practice field a full, a full use field?
At right now, we know we're looking at this project, that's ultimately one of the issues. I'll just see, if you see on the top of this, it's a drainage corridor and a creek area. When we skinned that, we saw some considerable flooding. So there is some question on whether that would be the best location to put actual infrastructure because I'm worried about the longevity and sustainability of it being in the flood area. But as an organization grows, that would be something we would look for some opportunities where an additional field might could be located.
I, I know, I know the parking lot has been recently redone. I'm, I'm, I'm curious as to are there plans to expand the driveway? Because it's very difficult to go in and out of Eastern Little League field. Because if someone's coming out, you can't go in.
Right now, we don't have current plans. That would be something we would probably have to look with Waco ISD at as well as.
Because it would be, you'd have to extend into what is their property, their easement or whatever.
Correct. So that's something that we could look into. On the right hand side, we, we do have a picture of Southern Little League, a long time organization. I, I did mention this one is not city of Waco property, but because of their involvement and presence in the community, I wanted to make sure and mention the youth baseball and softball activities that go out there. It is a four field complex, like our others with lights, restrooms and concessions. Now additional fields that we have, as I mentioned, those are the little league areas for the select teams. Up at the top of Cameron Park, there's Northern Gateway, an area that we made a lot of improvements to. And really an area used to be a northern little league, a lot of history in that area for baseball. And so some improvements were made when we made the park improvements for the Centennial. Currently there's a use agreement, Waco Heat uses that area. Waco Heat, their organization, they do also use an area at Lake Air for practices. This field up at Northern Gateway, it does have lights, does have access to the park restrooms, doesn't have standalone restrooms, but a pavilion is right next to there with parking. And so they have access to the park restrooms. And as I mentioned, it is within Cameron Park. Next over on the middle slide, we mentioned the Cotton Palace area, another historical area for baseball. Been played for many years. The city used to operate a full complex for softball. Baylor baseball used to play out there. Currently we have the use agreement with the Waco Rampage organization. Two fields in that area, our crews have been out about a month ago and working on those fields. They were out again as we've seen growth of vegetation everywhere. So as soon as we can get some access and Waco Rampage is ramping up, we'll have those fields ready to go. Lights and restrooms. And as you also know, department wide, we've been engaged in a city of way, with overall master plan for that Cotton Palace area and future developments. And then on the right, you will see J C Park and that is next to the Tennyson Middle School area. And current use agreement for that field is with the Buzz Lightning organization is just one field. Does have lights and restrooms and they have been a long-term use agreement for that area as well. Now improvements and challenges, obviously with this many fields and multiple organizations, you know, there's always going to be the need for improvements, always going to be some challenges that we're facing. And one of the reasons we wanted to talk to you today, I mentioned our maintenance matrix. It's important with different organizations and fields with organizational support. And you know, how can we make sure that the fields are ready and in good condition? But then also working with the organizations to make sure that they're ready on a day in and day out basis. We do come in with that field preparation at the start of every spring. We fertilize in the winter, we'll seed where necessary, we'll come in, skin infield, take care of irrigation concerns and also look at infrastructure improvements. This past year in 2021, we did add some backstops to our park inventory as we did the improvements at Trailblazer Park. There was a brand new backstop put into that park area. And then at Kendrick Park, we did some improvements and really an overall rehab of that backstop area. Kendrick's definitely one of our most popular neighborhood parks. As Councilmember Bearfield mentioned, there was, was some work done at Eastern Little League this past year as well with the helps of some neighborhood grants. We did, redid all the fixtures within the restrooms, a new parking area, working with our public works department, the addition of the practice field. And then just recently the league was secured a new scoreboard and our crews helped with that installation of the scoreboard. Challenges, it's aging infrastructure. As you know, baseball really peaked. You know, the seventies, eighties, early nineties, just all that was a lot of investment was put into baseball across the nation. And so now that we're 20 and 30 years in, just a lot of aging infrastructure on backstops, dugouts, things of that nature. You know, to keep baseball fields to a good quality level, it takes day in and day out maintenance. And those maintenance standards and the workload capacity is something that we battle as well. Another element of challenge that we look at is public use. And as I mentioned, when you have use agreements, often you have a lot of practices going on for a certain organization or a league. And so, you know, public use of, you know, maybe a group of kids just want to go out and play the Sandlot style of baseball. We have backstops for that, but we want to make sure that parks are accessible and open to the public. And I mentioned that year round activation. Any park area, we want to make sure that it's not fenced off for eight months out of the year. We want to make sure it's accessible in park areas and seeing different activities that we can perhaps program or allow access to. Other challenges in looking, in looking for directions, the use agreements that we have, this style of use agreement has been in place for 20 plus years within our departments. What we've seen though is Waco grows, you have more and more teams interesting in using fields. And we have some organizations or select teams that because we don't have an available field for a use agreement, you know, they just rent Riverbend Park day in and day out. So you're having some teams that are paying. Then you have some use agreement areas, but I do go back, there is the maintenance perspective to where if you have a use agreement, you are required for maintenance of some areas. So that does help in regards to our workload capacity. So these are all types of things. Today we're here to talk about obviously moving forward on the Lake Air and Challenger, but I thought it was very important to give an overall perspective and really a status update of where we're at when it comes to baseball and softball and our different inventory. And with your direction to any input, we'll take some questions and if needed, return to council for some future updates as we continue to look to provide these opportunities to build a city of champions across the city of Waco.
Thank you, Jonathan. I think that this update was helpful. I do have some questions. You mentioned the, the how long that use agreement has been in place. And I was wondering, is there any, how can we better assist our communities and these community boards who are volunteers, who are moms and dads who are working with the level of expectation that we have? Is the, is the agreement still valid 20 years later after it's in, you know, creation? Is it some things we need to change? And how often are we communicating with those organizations? I mean, you know, how often do they meet? Is it just at the beginning of the season? Are you meeting regularly to, to talk about expectations, you know, what you all are, what you all are doing and set that directly? What is expecting of the organizations and set that directly so that we can continue to build and grow together? Because I, you know, what, what we don't ever want to see is, you know, if it's not a, a league that has a lot of parental support or a lot of organizational, organizational support that can sustain the upkeep and maintenance, how do we make a plan that the leagues that may not have as many bodies or physical resources can keep at the level as the others? You know, we want to make sure that, that, that we are doing what we can for everybody or putting them in a position to do for themselves the best way they can. My second question, I do want you all to come back specifically about Eastern because unlike our tenured council member Rodriguez, I'm a new baseball mom. And so this is very new to me. However, what I'm realizing is that there's, there's severe differences in how we do this work. And that's not okay. So I want to talk more about, because we, we have opportunities and now with properties that we've recently acquired, that maybe it's time to make some, some changes or shifts or additions to opportunities that we have for our city leagues. And so I would like to come back specifically if, if I can request, I know it's not the time to request future agenda items, but that's something that specifically I want to see. I want a breakdown of how the, you know, what is it of this matrix, of these use agreements, how they're shaped, how, and how we move forward so that we can all grow in this, in this space together.
Sure thing. I appreciate it. We'll come back.
All right, Holmes over here. I'll preface my comments by saying that my 10-year-old son plays for both the Little League, Lake Air Little League and the Waco Heat select teams. I'm over at this place like four, four nights a week. I know every square inch of this deal. But so I've got a bunch of questions here. So cut me off after like 45 minutes if I ever got to.
I'm already seeing a donor possibility here. Jim Holmes posting up.
The, the sizes of the fields, I know right now baseball, Lake Air's got like three different sizes. You know, two small ones, kind of a medium sized one, and then a big one. And I noticed on our, our first diagram, our rendering, there's just really two different sizes. Have we put any thought into like the 10 years have some, I know the 11 years play on that middle one and the older kids play on that bigger one. And I guess is that one up in the upper right hand, is that, I think it is slightly bigger. Okay. I've not seen that rendering.
It is a slight difference, but they are mostly, they are pretty close. And that was developed in coordination with the leadership of, of Lake Air Little League. We've done some review with them during the design stage.
And are these going to be turf or grass or what are we?
It's going to be grass.
Okay.
Yep.
Wanted to make sure that was right. The, I know the current one, we've got like a little archway that honors the state champions and the regional champions and all that. I hope we can keep that something to that same effect over in these new fields. Because I know, I think some of my old friends played on that state championship. Bill Goss and Kelly Coker, Burl Coker played on that state championship team that went to Pennsylvania. So some way to make sure that stays or just move it over or do something there. The, what else here? The parking is what I was concerned about. Because right now they kind of, we work in between the fields and people kind of park up on the grass and, you know, park across the street and on the, on the street. And is it, are we going to be able to use, or what's the plan? able to use, or what's the plan for parking?
One of the key efficiencies, and honestly, it, it is a significant savings, given the pricing that we got back, is that we were able to utilize the existing street width, reduce that for the travel lanes, and add angle parking along the perimeter on the field side, along Trice, but then also both sides of 44th Street. So that's a significant amount of parking that we did not have to construct new. There will be the addition of dedicated accessible parking, nine spots that you'll see at the very top of the site there. And we are still exploring what agreement instrument might secure the long-term use of our neighbors' parking as well at the Waco Association of Realtors. They, we've had initial conversations, and they're very amenable. It's a practice that's ongoing, and there's actually already a partnership of sorts of using, pooling resources on both sides of that property line. But we can formalize that and make sure that everybody's taken care of properly.
I'm trying to remember, what parking is WISD going to use for the football field?
For the football field, there is also the addition of parking in the immediate vicinity. And I know their master plan expands some of that parking access as well. So they're constructing dedicated parking lots.
And then is, and I'm trying to remember the, where we're vacating. Is some of the, I know the WISD will just move into there, and they want to close 42nd Street and stuff like that. But is some of that going to be parking? I was just trying to remember.
I, I can't recall specifically what their rendering showed, but I, I don't know how finalized some of the, the previous graphics are for that redevelopment. So I couldn't speak to that.
So really, we won't have any dedicated parking lot? It'll be mostly street parking is what we're talking about?
It'll be street. And as Tom mentioned, you know, there's opportunities, and these have been informally discussed. There's a lot of development, not only the base, but the high school. Paul Tyson, they've got a practice, baseball and softball field across the way. With the street parking and some potential opportunities, we, we think parking will be a lot more formalized as opposed to having to park on the grass.
Right now, that, I guess basically where these, these fields are, particularly the ones on the bottom, that's open fields there. And they're basically used for some practice and football. There's, I think there's a bunch of football out there going on. Do we have plans on what to do? And I don't know if there was, were there ever any formal football leagues run by the city on that property?
Yes, there were not only former City of Waco flag football leagues, but then we also worked with some use agreement organizations to utilize those, what was called the, the Lake Air football fields. At this time, there's not a dedicated replacement. That's one of those areas, as football's a seasonal area, looking at different park locations throughout the city, potential, you know, of areas that we've acquired, flex-use areas, future developments that have open green space. We, we know there's a need for those areas, and we feel we're going to be able to accommodate those.
Okay. I know early on, we were talking about rethinking the Cobb's recycling thesis, if you will, and spreading that to several sites in the city. It's kind of a tertiary issue here. But is, would we plan on keeping it in the same place for now, or is that?
We do. And some of these conversations are more than a year old at this point. But it sounds like there's, there's a lot of value to the fact that the community knows where to find this facility where it is. And we're complicating that enough by relocating the driveway access. So we will be able to kind of assess that as we redevelop the site. But yeah, I think they were fielding some feedback that suggested there's a lot of value in keeping it in this location.
So I'm trying to, the access is going to be still on 44th?
The bottom of the page here is Trice, and the left of the page is 44th. And it formerly connected to 44th, nearly where that sidewalk connection is.
Right, 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 right. And now we're going to push it off onto Cobb's?
Yep.
Good. Let me see my other comments here. I know part of this, we got to move on this because it's part of the puzzle piece in the venue project with WISD and the county. And we've got agreements to move forward on this. And I know the whole purpose of this is we were awful bit on our, on our bids that we put together, what, four or five years ago. So that, that kind of is logical. But so on this one, yeah, I'm very supportive of it. But I do, I appreciate what, what Councilmember Bearfield is saying also on the, as we have Eastern, and it seems like Eastern, Southern, and Lake Air are kind of the three places where our leagues and all of our boys and girls are participating and, and kind of a city, not, maybe not directly sponsored, but city kind of run leagues. And that's, that's where they come from. So as we, as we, and, and the Lake Air right now is a pretty old facility, and it's been there for a long time. So I like the fact that we're, as part of this venue project, we're getting it fixed up. But I really think and support getting plans for both Southern and Eastern as well. Because as you're saying, it was kind of disappointing that you're on the data, not, not the data you put together, I love. The, the facts of the data are disappointing, and that are kind of usages going down over, over a three-year period. But I'd say one thing, it's kind of fun for the Lake Air kids to go over to Eastern and go over to Southern and kind of do the interleague play, like you say, that we didn't used to do. We got a game over at Eastern tonight, actually.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting concept. And, you know, a complex like this, you know, it provides the opportunity for larger scale to where you can host more. And, you know, Councilmember, we also, there is a China Spring Little League as well, which is a, on private property, that's not on city land. That's another one that's involved in different games as far as interleague, as long as I mentioned other communities, Lacy Lakeview and Robinson as well.
We can get those Southern, East, on the drawing board too for improvements and get them up to, up to speed. We got to get these baseball players back going from Waco, Texas. Get them out there. But anyway, no, it's great.
Jim, we lost three fields from Waco Storm right in the middle of District Two to that developer. And I think I mentioned that last council meeting. That's three ball fields that our kids could have used or were using. Now they have no use, they don't have them. So what are we going to do about that?
Well, Jonathan, Tommy, good presentation. And I know we're up against the gun getting this put in here at the, at the, at the juncture in which the whole venue project needs this to happen. So I'm supportive. Thanks for your work.
Thank you, Jonathan. We so appreciate everybody's ever, Tom, your work on this too, and look forward to seeing progress as we go. It's going to be great. Thank you, guys. And as Deidre makes her way down to the speaker table for this next presentation, City Manager Ford, who cannot be in the room with us today, wanted to make sure that the public had a quick update on our equity work from his perspective. A couple of weeks ago, the city manager made the decision to make Deidre Emerson our deputy city manager, the equity officer for the city of Waco. This decision comes after a couple of months, a couple-month search process for new equity officer. The city manager believes, as does Deidre, that her taking on this role is a temporary move that will last between 12 and 18 months. During that time, Deidre will be continuing what Mr. Ford believes the best work on equity that exists in central Texas. Additionally, during that time, we will be hiring an equity team member to support Deidre's leadership on this item. And we are hopeful that we can grow an equity officer in-house that understands the organization's needs and values ahead of taking on the leadership of this critical work. We believe that this will be more likely, we believe this will more likely result in success versus other examples. Bradley is seen in other cities and educational organizations that hire an outside equity officer that quickly leads, quickly ends up out of alignment with the leadership or the organization's values. With that, I'm excited for how the public, for the public to see how much work has and is and will be forthcoming on this issue in our community. And this is a high priority issue, but we are running a little bit behind schedule today and have a robust executive session. So I know that this is going to be an ongoing conversation that we continue to have because of its high value and high priority in our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to our deputy city manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Asha, if we can go two slides up. Today, I'll give you some, a little bit of background, our goals today, the goals of the process, and our accomplishments to date. I'll summarize some of those. What the things that we have in process and as well as next steps that we have planned. So the city of Waco work on equity, specifically race equity, has been in front of mind for many years. Whether it was the Visioning Project, Upjohn Report, which focused on economic development, or our annual, in five-year community development plans that outlays how we spend our federal entitlement dollars. The National Resource Network final report that we were presented with, I believe that was in 2016. And then the consistent participation between staff and council in Race Equity Institute training. All that led to two equity retreats that we were, that were held in 2019, one in May, which set the foundation for where our focus would be along the lines of race equity. And then in October 2019, we talked about and looked at the things that departments were doing and what things the departments could do potentially in the future. So the goals that were, the agreed-upon goals were to institute organizational policies, processes, and programs where needed to ensure equity and accountability, to cultivate a thriving workforce within the city of Waco that ensures racial equity, as well as improve the quality of life outcomes through racial equity initiatives. So what we have done, and I'll highlight a few of those things. The retreats led to equity being added as a council strategic goal, which really pushed the realignment for the assistant city managers at that time to, and to establishing an executive sponsor for the equity, for equity work in the city manager's office, which has been me since that time back in 2019, 2020. And so our participation in the Race Equity Institute training, becoming members of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, has really helped us spring forward in a lot of the work that we've done and really look more granularly at what happens in departments, the issues and the things as we respond to resident requests and how we make those responses, how we outlay programs, and looking at where our budget, how budgeting happens, looking at the data around that and where things are needed most, establish priorities in conjunction with the council. In 2020, we spent a lot of time focused on COVID, but our equity work was not delayed or postponed in that process. And we included equity as part of our thought process and how we utilized the data around initiating testing sites for COVID-19 as well as vaccination locations. So the data was our driver as well as our economic assistance that included the establishment of a Small Business Recovery Grant Program. The council went on to increase the minimum wage on incentivized projects, reviewed our water rate structure to achieve more equitable water rates by shifting costs from lower consumers, lower consumers to higher consumers. And then we continued to implement our lettuce preventable program in coordination with our other rehab dollars to ensure that they are in the places that they need to be, specifically being intentional about going to where. We see that there's a need in kind of doing that house-to-house, door-to-door advertisement of those programs to ensure that the neighborhoods in the communities that would benefit the most are receiving information about that. Most recently, we implemented, most recently, we implemented the Rental Mortgage Assistance Program, which increased our own employee minimum wage to $15 an hour. HR has implemented a new hiring platform, which allows us to redact applicant identifier information until the hiring manager has selected the persons to be interviewed. Over the last two years, while the diversity of the department has, has increased, we recognize that there is still more, more work to do in diversifying our leadership. So we have intentionally post, are posting our available positions in locations where they will have a broader audience, such as ELGL, which is the Engaging Local Government Leaders, as well as Local Government Hispanic Network, and National Forum for Public Administrators, and various other trade affinity organizations. So we have expanded where we place our job announcements so that we can cast the net a lot broader and wider than what typically has happened in the past. Various departments are engaged in race equity work, such as Human Resources. They've developed a hiring video. So some of the things we have in process, they've developed a hiring video where they are, which they are near completion on, that provides hiring managers on not only the hiring process, but things to be mindful of to ensure that there is not implicit bias happening in the hiring process. I mean, we all can use some general reminders from time to time. And so economic development is in process on the Equitable Economic Development Study. Purchasing and myself are in process on the Disparity Study, where we are analyzing the city's historical utilization in awarding contracts to minority and women-owned business enterprises. The results of that study will allow us to develop, to develop programs and/or strategies to improve our utilization and assist in improving the availability of local contractors for various city of Waco needs. COVID-19 really highlighted the racial disparities in health. We all saw that and how those numbers rolled out and who, who was dying and who, who was actually taking access or accessing vaccine and/or testing. So the Health District has received grant dollars that has, that will benefit them, and they've begun a department-wide health equity training. The homelessness, homelessness strategic plan is near completion, and we have recently begun implementation of the housing strategic plan. So while we have some really heavy and critical work underway, in the coming weeks, we will establish an Employee Equity Core Team, which I'll speak a little bit more in a coming slide. And we also will continue to identify and develop internal equity resources such as training, readings, and other, and other things in order to ensure that the knowledge base of our employees, not just from a leadership standpoint, but into our employees, the staff and staff levels, frontline employees. One of the things that we've, are doing is myself, well, mainly Bradley, Bradley leads it, is the employee orientation. And we are spending time talking about not only our strategic goals, but what our strategic goals mean for line staff employees, for every employee within the organization. We all have to own this in order for it to be part of our foundational work and is part of our fabric as we move forward. And so really making sure that we're formalizing, we will work to make sure that we're formalizing our work into a racial equity strategic plan, in process of developing a language access plan. And that addresses all abilities, all abilities, as well as exploring the implementation of a welcoming week. And so welcoming weeks, we've seen in other communities, specifically, we saw the work of that happen in Tulsa on one of the last visits that we were on. And welcoming week allows us to engage all nationalities throughout our community, and so identify and have activities that brings all the neighborhoods together, all the nationalities together, so that we all benefit from each other. So when we talk about our equity work, we consistently say we want the work to be intentional and integrated into all that we do and institutionalized as a natural part of, of the work that we do. So it's, it's about our fabric. It's when you see us, you hear us, that you'd hear the language, you hear those things. And so the, one of the best ways we thought to do that and build awareness of what is happening in the organization is to start and work from kind of a, a ground-up perspective. And so we will be working through a process where we will allow employees to apply, to participate in the Equity Core Team. And so that group will be comprised of employees who have applied to serve on the team. The team will be expected to provide thought, leadership, guidance, and recommendations to me. They will promote activities and model behaviors and share any lessons learned or resources that they have that we may not be aware of to support the work of the overall organization. This core team is also an opportunity for employees to work in a cross-departmental team and learn about others so that they work better together for the residents of our community, as well as they'll learn more about other departments. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Questions or comments? Great presentation.
I'll just kick it off. Deputy City Manager Emerson, I appreciate you taking this on. I appreciate your energy. I appreciate your skill set, and I appreciate your experience. I know that you regularly attend a lot of national seminars that talk about racial equity, and you'll help bring best practices to, to Waco, and I'm excited about that. Again, I like the intentional nature of what you're doing. I like your the intentional nature of what you're doing. I like your idea of setting a strong foundation and not having this, you know, be focused on for one year and then go away. We, we need something, a strategic plan with an objective that, that lasts and is fruitful. So I'm excited about you taking this position, and you've got my support as we go forward.
Deputy City Manager, wow, I almost called you City, Deputy City Manager Ford, Deputy City Manager Emerson, forgive me. I appreciate this presentation. This is an issue that I care so deeply about, and I hear so much from my constituents on. What I'm really proud of is the work that we have behind us. I think when I talk to folks that are a part of other municipalities across Texas, people are really surprised and impressed by the work that we're doing, and that makes me proud of our team and of our city staff and our council. I think especially when we're looking at central Texas, Waco stands out. I will say, after the last legislative session, where we saw civil rights attacks on women and people of color and LGBTQ youth and people with disabilities, using Texas as our base isn't super inspiring to me. I want to see the best practices in race equity coming out of DC and Seattle and San Francisco, and then contextualizing that to Waco and to, and to Texas. So we're really moving the ball forward because there is such deep, deeply entrenched racism and sexism and all the isms in our city that we really need to reckon with. So I both celebrate the incredibly good work that we've done and mourn that there is truly so much work before us. And so for that reason, I would love to see this role hired much closer to 12 months than 18 months, just because the work is so all-encompassing. And you, as our Deputy City Manager, are doing so much work and want this role to, for someone to be able to just wear this hat and for you to be able to wear your hat as Deputy City Manager well and in a way that's sustainable. A few thoughts I have in terms of specific items that were highlighted, our $15 an hour base wage for incentive projects is such a win that was done by this council prior to me rolling on. However, $15 an hour in 2020 went a lot farther for our residents than $15 an hour goes in 2022. So I would love for us to put some sort of a percentage to that, so that is continuing to be a competitive rate. So that way, we don't see this mirror what we see with the federal minimum wage and that number just be stagnant and lose punch year over year. So perhaps we could consider a 3% raise to that every year to keep that competitive. Things in terms of our own hiring, I know the City of DeSoto hire, changed some of their policies in order to do ban the box. So you're looking at, similar to the process that we're doing of HR and not seeing some of these identifiers until the end of the process. We can do that in terms of any interaction with the criminal justice system, so that way there are less biased decisions being made from a hiring front. There's really compelling data about getting people rehired and reintegrated in society when there are HR policies like that in place. So I would encourage our staff and HR team to look into that. My other question or thought for you is, I'm curious what our plans are for that Equity Officer salary that was set aside for the budget. Can we use that for some sort of staff training or some sort of like a consultant for DEI? So we're leveraging those dollars specifically for equity in this fiscal year?
Because there is work already, one of the things that I was encouraged by is because of the, the receptiveness of the Health District staff to the health equity training that they went through, so that we are reviewing that to see if it would be appropriate for us to disseminate amongst our staff. And so the Employee Equity Core Team would essentially be the first group that would go through a training of that sort. So, and then we also want to make sure that we, that, that's the benefit of having the Employee Equity Core Team, is that we have the ability to utilize that as the training ground, per se, to say, to, to just make sure that we're determining what's working and what's not working and how we need to shift versus doing it enterprise-wide and having to make adjustments.
Makes sense. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, Deputy City Manager Emerson, so grateful for your work for our city and also taking on essentially a second full-time job on a hopefully temporary basis. But yeah, I think Waco, for a city of our size, to have prioritized race equity several years ago and to be carrying this forward, is important. And it's, you know, for a city where we're located and with our peer institutions, I think we're a leader among our peers, but I hope we continue to be and to carry these forward. I appreciate the list of accomplishments that you've gone over, which I, too, am proud of. And I know there's a lot of important work to be done, and hopefully at some point in the near future, you can be handing this off to a bright, shining, new Equity Director to, to continue all the good work you're doing, but not have to have this essentially full-time job. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Deputy City Manager Emerson, thank you for the presentation. One of the things that, that I appreciate is that, even in referencing this presentation, that you went back and to, to put all of the previous plans that, that spoke to the needs of equity planning, strategic equity planning. However, they were just that. They were plans. And they hadn't, they had not been actualized to, until. And that we are finally laying foundation, if you will, to those plans that had been established. I mean, the vision and plan, so let, you know, that's, that's, that's my mama and, and Alice at that point in the early, in the very beginning of 2000s. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited that we are now in the point where things are actually being realized. One of the things that, that is important is that we, we do punch above our weight. And it is not just around this state that people know that. It's nationally. I know with, with you and in the organizations that you participate in and as you travel and, you know, for me and Councilmember Palmer as well, you know, you see that and you're having those conversations when you're engaging with GARE and with the National League of Cities Race Equity and Leadership Constituency Group and, and all of those things. And they're like, y'all are doing in Waco? Yes, yes. It is, it is, you know, become a priority for us and, and a part of our, of, of who we are and makeup. And I think that that's one of those things that will continue to allow Waco to be somewhere that is desirable for people who are coming here. People are coming here from all over the world. And one of the things that they want to make sure is that, that they're reflective in the makeup of the city that they live in. And I think that, that this work is, is leading in that we do well with those strategic partnerships. I know we've been dealing with GARE for a while and deal, and now, now the person who we dealt with and who came and met with us in their strategic plan at GARE is now at NLC doing the race equity, leading the Race Equity and Leadership Program. So, you know, we get to, to continue that work, and she knows where we are and what we've been doing. So that's always good to, to know that we, we can advance in that way. Partnerships with, following patterns and footsteps of cities that have already instituted some of this work. I mean, the beautiful thing about this stuff is it's, it's the main street way is case. It's copy and steal everything. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel and we don't have to recreate things. We just have to follow and study the cities who are doing it well and take that part and make it reflective of who we are in our City of Waco. I did a few questions, though. I know that I, at one point, all of, all of council had gone through REI, you know, all of Third Floor had gone through REI. I don't know how many department heads have been through the Race Equity Institute, and I'm, I'm curious about that number. I also was curious about, Councilmember Palmer, you mentioned the, the banning the box on the applications. Don't we do that?
Yes.
Okay. It was like, I, I thought we, yeah, yeah, yeah. We, I was like, I thought we did. But, because those were things that were important to make sure that no one is hindered or denied a, an opportunity or a second chance, specifically with the City of Waco. And we, and we constantly encourage all of our industry partners to do the same. I want to highlight the fact, though, that we have changed our perspective and how we offer some of the resources that we have that truly reflect our responsibility and role in making our communities and neighborhoods better. It wasn't always the case where you, code, code compliance, anybody saw a potential issue that we had a resource for and went out to offer that resource. But the fact that now we're doing that speaks volumes to who, who, who we have put in place to be intentional and to, to be considerate of our people and of our community. So that is a, a strong statement about us. Now, do we have work to do? Yes. Yes, we do. And I echo my fellow council members in hoping that, that the quest to find the equity lead is not a long one, because you have lots to do. You know, and multitasking, though we are good at it, is not something that we need to prioritize. And so, and, and I'm speaking to that specifically because the majority of my projects are equity-heavy. And I know that it, it is imperative that we offer the support and then get you the support that you need to get the work that we have dreamed, envisioned, done without burdening and, and, and just, just wearing you out. So I think kudos to this council, the council previously, for making this a priority, our, our senior management and staff for walking us through this process and how we do it in the best and right and just way for our city. But this is who we are. And this is where we're going. So let's get it.
With that, I'll, just to answer your question regarding the number of individuals, so while I don't have the exact number in front of me, but previously, all of our department heads had been through. And so now that we've had some transition amongst department heads and quite frankly, the council, we have submitted our new list. Waco Foundation in cooperation with Cooper Foundation is initiating more Race Equity Institute training. And so we have provided our new list to them, and those are getting scheduled as we speak.
Awesome. Thank you.
My comments will be real short, Mayor, because I think everybody, every one of my council members has said something that I truly support and I agree with. Deputy City Manager, thank you for this report. It, it's very enlightening. The only thing I have to say is the disparity in, in our local small developers getting jobs. I know through my work with the Hispanic Chamber, I have found out that most of their issues have been the cost of the insurance. And I don't know if we can work with them in some kind of way to help them alleviate that, that problem. I know insurance is, is, is important, you know, so I'm not saying do away with it. I'm just saying, let's work with the small developers, small minority developers that are having this problem. And also, you do have a lot of work to do with department heads. Our department heads in the City of Waco should reflect the look of the city. And I don't think we're there. But you do, like Councilmember Bearfield said, you have a lot of work to do there. But hopefully, it won't be too hard for you to accomplish that goal. But that's the goal that I would like to see, something reflective of our city. Thank you for this report.
Councilmember Rodriguez, specifically on the small businesses, one of the things that I'll take this opportunity to ensure, as part of the disparity study, the feedback from our small contractors is very important. And on May 24th at 10, 10 a.m., there will be a listening session, a focus group for small business contractors to participate and tell us what their needs are. We will be, our communication plan will include notifying all of our small business chambers and any entry point into city purchasing and contracting. We'll be utilizing those to make sure that that word gets out. But if you, I will make sure that you get a flyer, so you can please help us spread that word as well.
Thank you.
I'm incredibly proud of this work. I'm incredibly proud of our team. I'm really excited about where we're headed. And I believe that Waco truly is a city on a hill where everyone has the opportunity to prosper. And it's going to take this level of strategic work to ensure that that is a reality. And so I look forward to continuing to see what we can do together to make sure that every Wacoan has an opportunity to advance, that every Wacoan has an opportunity to win and achieve this Waco dream that I believe is in front of us with our economic growth and the improvement of our quality of life. So I commend staff's work on this and look forward to continuing to support it as we move forward.
And with that, I will ask if there are a request for any future gen items. And if not...
...made earlier.
Was that? Okay. Just, just those, yeah. Well, that will recess the work session and reconvene the regular session for executive session as read into the record by our Assistant City Secretary at 5:06 p.m.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, Attorney Briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, Contract for Transfer Lift Station and Project Packages 1 through 3, Gravity and Siphon, Lift Station and Force Main. Two, Real Property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And three, Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We will now go into executive session.